Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Abington School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. And we are going to start with reading an approval of records from our January 26th, 2021 meeting. If I can get a motion to approve the minutes.
Wendy, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have consideration of revisions to the 2020-2021 Abington High School Improvement Plan. And that is with Mr. Jonathan Bourne. And he would just have to be unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Yeah, thank you for taking this under consideration, School Committee, and my apologies. And a big, big thank you to Felicia and Teresa Minahan and the folks at Town Hall for getting this in today's packet. The high school, as you know, is coming up on its decennial NEASC accreditation on March 14th to the 17th. And one of the components of our accreditation visit is to have a current school improvement plan. Working with the school council at Abington High School, what I tried to do was capture some of the work that had been done this summer and early fall in preparation for our new learning models. The titles are kind of the headlines of the four improvement goals are mostly similar year to year. The big change for us would be that the item four, which was to prepare for the NEASC visit or to follow up on recommendations from the collaborative conference in 2018, is now to actually host the visit. Obviously, with the last year's spring being what it was, the Abington School Council, Abington High School Council did not have an opportunity to revise the school improvement plan. So we did that throughout this winter. So this is an informational document to share. The school council supported it unanimously. And we're just, I wanted the school committee to see that. And we're hoping that we could present the current school improvement plan as a part of our NEASC accreditation visit in two weeks.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No. So at this time, the recommended action is to, is for a motion to just endorse the revisions to the 2020 to the 2021 Abington High School Improvement Plan as presented. So I endorse it. Would anyone else like to?
I will.
I'll endorse.
Aye. Felicia?
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good with whatever it is. I'm good with it.
Perfect. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. So next up, we have the FY 21 to 2022 federal funding with Dr. Michelle Ash. She'll be giving us some information about this. Money. And she just needs to be unmuted.
Good. To Felicia. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. So in your packet, I just wanted to review some of the funding, COVID-related funding relief that we have received and anticipate receiving. And the first one is called the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund. And that's something that we will be receiving in February, or receiving in February and half of it in April. And that's to be spent by the end of this fiscal year, and that's for $98,887. The food service program received coronavirus relief for food services in the amount of $5,645. And that needed to be spent by December 31st, 2020, and that was spent out. There was also ESER 1, or the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ESER 1, which is a federally funded grant program. And that's in the amount of $162,946. And that's to be spent out at the end of the FY 22 fiscal year. And the second is the most recent ESER 2 funding. And that is in the amount of $597,630. And that is to be spent by June 30th of 2023. So that's a relief fund to go over two and a half fiscal years. In addition to that, we've received, or we have submitted $167,000 in FY 21 through Plymouth County CARES. And we have submitted $937,565 in FY 21 through Plymouth County CARES for COVID-related expenses.
Thanks, Felicia. Can I ask you a question? Is there any way that you can speak to some of this as to what has been bought?
Sure.
Perfect.
Yep. So for the Plymouth County CARES, that's the largest chunk of money that we've spent thus far. And that money has spent, has been spent on technology for additional, all the PPE, cleaning supplies, extra custodial help, extra nursing help, long-term substitutes for teachers that took leave of absences, substitutes for teachers or staff members that were quarantined or had COVID or COVID-related symptoms. That has paid for, it has helped the gap in our... Last year, it assisted in paying for refunds for buses. It has assisted in the gap between what we have in our budget for transportation offset and how much we've actually collected. It has paid for... That's, that's, those are the general buckets.
Thank you, Felicia. And can you speak to at this time as to what we will be spending for any of the other reliefs that we're receiving?
Yep. So I can speak to this year, then, the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund. A majority of that is going to go to additional technology. We just, Rich is going to talk later about a 5-6 laptop program, hotspots, licenses that we've needed to purchase because of COVID and the number of devices that we've put out. Food service, the $5,600 that helped offset the cost of COVID-safe packaging for both meals that are being picked up and taken, and also for how we're packaging meals in school, which is very different and very costly compared to pre-COVID. The ESER 1, which needs to be spent out, be spent out through the end of next year, that is helping pay for lunch and recess, pairs, additional custodial staff, and also help pay for some additional cleaning, not cleaning supplies, cleaning equipment. And we have not spent that out entirely, and we have not begun spending out an ESER 2. That's a grant that just, that was announced in December, and the funding is not yet available.
Awesome. Great news. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just had a... I just had a follow-up, Wendy, to your question, Felicia, about as these, will we come back to another open session meeting where this will all be broken out, like in the public record for how and what was spent by what grant?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Felicia, my only question was the CARES money at the bottom of the page. I'm sorry, I have the page in front of me. That's independent of any of the funding mentioned above, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that was money that the federal government sent to the state of Massachusetts. Plymouth County took the money for their, the cities and towns within Plymouth County, and they have managed the CARES Act money.
And it says submitted, so I guess I'm going to ask her, is there a possibility, first of all, it doesn't get approved? And if that possibility happens, what's the ramifications?
Sure. So COVID-related expenses have been submitted through the town, through Sumoquon, to Plymouth County. Then they are, thankfully so, very judicious in looking at every single expense that has been allocated to CARES. They've followed up and asked us for backup and follow-up, and we've provided that. And as of right now, there's a significant amount of money that has been submitted. I don't know the exact amount, through CARES, that has yet to be reimbursed back to the town. And quite honestly, depending on where Plymouth County and CARES, what they do end up reimbursing for, we believe they're all COVID-related expenses. And we've only submitted COVID-related expenses. There will have to be a conversation and a decision made if, if significant amounts of money aren't reimbursed and how that, we may have to use some of the ESER money, for example, to pay for those expenses. Or there might be another mechanism within town.
Okay.
Thank you. So at this time, there's no motions that we have to consider. Correct. Perfect. Thank you, Felicia. So at this time, we're going to move on to the discussion of the learning model, excuse me, with Mr. Schiefer.
So there's been a lot of discussion about this, and a lot has happened over the last couple of weeks. Felicia just mentioned some of it. When she mentioned the money coming in in December, it was the end of December, and the amounts weren't exactly clear, and subsequently we found out. And as everybody knows, there have been a lot of challenges around bringing everybody full in person. And I just, I want to say that every single district is different. And unfortunately, our news sources don't always give us complete stories and complete pictures. And social media doesn't either. But as consumers of information, we're all using different news sources and social media to get our information and make comparisons, because that's what we have. One of the things that's happened is there've been districts on the South Shore that have been able to bring more students back in person than some other districts. Those have been districts with lower, basically lower class sizes, so that they are able to maintain distances in terms of safety. The, a couple of things have happened that are helping us get back in person this school year. And I want to, I just want to talk a second about what they are and why they're important to us. And then I want to, you know, and I want to tell you what I anticipate happening. But there are no, there are no definites during a pandemic. The money that Felicia has described, so there were a number of, there were a number of challenges for us in terms of spacing, not only just in classrooms, but even eating lunch, students taking off masks if we were to bring everybody back because they have to have a six-foot distance. Transportation was a challenge because there weren't enough buses in the Commonwealth to provide transportation if you could only put 26 students on a bus. So this increased money has meant that we can hire more people to help us with the supervision to keep those safe distances that we're required to keep. This increased money means that we can find more places, including perhaps tenting, so that we can use our buildings and continue to use our buildings as places for our students to learn. Actually, I had talked to a couple of realtors looking for different properties in the, within a five-mile radius of Abington that would be appropriate. The problem with just moving a group of students to a different building is all of those support ancillary services that they require from a nurse to lunch to a pickup, drop-off, the physical plant. There are so many things that a school building has that it's designed for that some of these other facilities or buildings just aren't. You really need to find a school building if you can. We looked at the Frollo, some of that space can be used and will be used in a plan going forward. But for its own standalone, again, because you'd be creating redundant services, such as food service, such as nursing support, it became difficult. And again, more things become possible with more money. So this additional money has helped us quite a bit with the feasibility of a full-person return. The relaxing of the transportation standards, where we can go back to putting more students on the bus, has also made transporting our students to school possible. Those things weren't possible weeks ago. They are now possible for us. And most recently, as of today, I think you probably heard that the governor and the commissioner are looking at changing time on learning again and having the Board of Education vote on that in the coming week. I believe it's next week that they're going to vote on that. That also helps us. So even prior to today's announcement about the governor and the commissioner asking the Board of Ed to vote differently on the time on learning, I've met with the school committee, we met several hours last week, more than several hours. And we've been planning for the last couple of weeks around the feasibility of a full in-person return. Given the announcements that were made today, and given the fact that schools have not been the source of spread of COVID-19, I am feeling confident that before the end of the school year, we will be back in person. Some things need to continue to occur, though, as we continue to work toward this. And again, we were working on this for the last, since the last school committee meeting. You know that, because there was, there was discussion at the, at the last meeting. There was a lot of social media discussion after the last meeting. And so it's something that's, that behind the scenes, we've been trying to figure out, measuring spaces. Having said all of that, there are two things that have to occur when we do this. It has to be safe. And it has to be done in a way that's engaging for our students and workable for teachers to create the kinds of environments that we want our kids to have. And I do believe we will accomplish those, those two things, that it'll be safe, and we'll find a workable way for our educators to work with our students. Our educators have had to pivot, I hate the word pivot now, because they've had to pivot so many times, and they've had to do so many things that have never been done before. And they've done everything that's been asked of them. And with the opportunities that we've been given to overcome the challenges that we have, along with the news that came today, it's, it's my opinion that, that our educators are gone, again, going to be asked to pivot again this school year. And, and we'll be, and we will be in person with our students. I don't know exactly what that looks like, and I don't know exactly when that will occur. Because there are a couple of things that have to take place. Logistically, we still need to make sure that we are, we are creating a doable, engaging environment for the students that we serve. That it's not just rows of kids sitting quietly all day long. It's, it's got to be more than that. We owe our, we owe everyone more than that. We owe the kids and the families, we owe our teachers, our paraprofessionals and tutors. We owe everyone who is working with kids, that that's how we're going to come back. So when you invite 2,000 friends back all at once, it's lunches, it's transportation, it's arrival, it's dismissal, it's outdoor spaces. Just, just to give you one example, the Woodsdale School doesn't have room for people to eat lunch because there just isn't the square footage. So if we got a tent, which we couldn't do before, they could eat lunch outside. That really isn't possible when it's 10 degrees out, or 20 degrees out, or 25 degrees out. It's going to get warmer. It's going to be more possible to do those things. And so the shot's going into people's arms. And I'm, I personally am feeling confident that in, in the coming weeks, there'll be more information and there'll be a clearer and a more definitive timeframe for this. We need to work with our association on this and our teachers on this. It's all, again, moving very fast for everyone. But we know that we have kids at home that need to be in school. And so that's, that's where our effort will be. So I want to answer what questions I can when, when we have a more full picture. You know, I, I know that this is a committee that's going to want to do a Q and A more publicly and more of a, some sort of a town hall fashion for people. Because it's going to be important that people know exactly what all of this looks like as we go into it.
Good news, Peter. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just had a comment related to, kind of going back to Felicia's federal funding breakdown and just, Peter, your comment about things needing to happen in order for this to occur. And I think something that maybe we just note for those that are listening is that there are, we have different buildings that are in different places. So we have a brand-new middle high school that may already perhaps need less in terms of things that might need to be funded in order to get us all back in person. So I just, when we come back and talk again publicly about the breakdown of how we're using the funds in these named grants like ESER 1, ESER 2, and the CARES, that I'd like to see us look a little closely at our elementary buildings, the ones that require more, that we have to be more creative, and what type of, what ways can we use that funding to enhance experiences for our youngest kids beyond just coming back and taking a seat in our building? That's just, that's it.
I also was just wondering if we can clarify for everybody who's listening in. I know that we need to wait on word from the state, but where we are with regards to talking with our association and when those meetings are happening, so that there's some sort of a timeline?
No, no, it's a, it's a great question. We already have dates set in the coming weeks, in the coming two weeks, each, each of the coming two weeks. And so the good news today for, for people that, you know, who, who, who we want to get our kids back to school is that with the if and when the Board of Education weighs in on this, it makes it easier for all of Massachusetts in terms of the discussion. The other piece we want to think about, though, is we want to listen very closely to what those requirements are going to be because we do not want to come up with a system and a plan and then redo it again. So there'll, there'll be no dragging of feet. We already have dates. This is already something we've been talking about. This is always something that's important to us. But we want to make sure we know what the plan is across Massachusetts before we implement a plan that doesn't fit that.
Also, just like we've talked a lot, the theme of our group has sort of been like the devil is in the details. And I'll be glad when we never have to say that phrase again. But one of the concerns I had listening today, and like, yes, let's get people back in. But the question was asked at the press conference around what are districts supposed to do who can't bring back all of their students at three feet? And the commissioner's answer was that they would come and work with districts or help districts who can't fit those students. Loved that answer. But I guess one of the questions I just have for us, the people who are responsible for planning the details, we, our class size is, is pretty maxed out, and, and the what we've been looking at in terms of availability of how we fit our people, we may be able to pull that off as long as nothing changes. So my question is, we don't have control over kids that move in or kids that leave a virtual pathway and decide to come back to school. And if that does occur, we then are one of those districts who are going to need to knock-knock on the commissioner's door and say, "Help us." Like, are you going to change a requirement? Or like, have you thought, has there been any conversation around the details relating to the changes in our population? Which is a kind of, to me, feels like a realistic possibility.
So I'm glad you brought that up because I think, I think a misconception that's been created through these discussions, and I own it, is that people think we're overcrowded. We're not overcrowded. We're just more crowded than, than those, than, I don't want to name names, but there's some, there are some wealthier systems on the South Shore that have smaller class sizes than we do. And with the virtual students who could potentially come back, or new students coming to us, now we have the opportunity to hire staff to accommodate those students in a different way that we didn't have before, because we can't just put them in the rooms, because we just don't have room for them. To your point. We do have room for what we presently have, if everything stayed the same, by basically taking everything out of the rooms and maintain, and we'd be able to maintain that three-foot piece. The money, the reason the money helps with that is because, again, of the additional staff that we'd be able to hire to accommodate other movements. I'm going to be honest with you. I'm going to be the last person to want to ask Desi to come out and help us because I think we can pull this off. And I think we know what we're doing better than, than Desi could provide. And I, I, you know, that's just how I feel. If it meant that we couldn't pull this off, I'd absolutely want Desi to come in, because this is important.
So I guess I just have a clarifying question to that response is if our, if we can fit, let's just pick a number, like 25 kids in a room in the elementary school with three-feet distance, and we have children who moved to Abington in May, and they're in the fourth grade. And we don't have, we have one spot, but maybe we need three spots, or, or whatever. You know, how do we, where do we put them, and how do we accommodate them? Have we thought through that?
Thank you for, thank you for cleaning up my rambling answer. Yes, we would have to hire someone to take care of them. We wouldn't be able to fit them in the rooms.
Does that mean that those kids get their own teacher, or that they, like, where, where do they go? I guess I'm just like, and I don't mean to, I won't spend too much time here. I just want to, like, I'm a planner. So I just am trying to understand, we feel tight, to me. We feel like if we can pull this off, and I hope that we do, that we can pull it off without any element of change. And it just feels like that never is the way things go.
Even the virtual kids coming back, Jackie, even if they're not new to Abington, we, we might need to move those virtual students to a multi-age group. Maybe hire a grade three and four teacher to, to teach a group of three, four, five, six, seven, eight students that would come back. And then once that group reached a critical mass, we would break that up into two other groups and support them in two different rooms. And people coming back from virtual, new people to Abington, just wouldn't have a choice with that. Because if we didn't do things like that, we wouldn't be able to open full in person. And that's not what we would want, but that would just be one of the many logistical details that are important to be able to be open about and fix before we make the move.
Thank you. I imagine some of our future meetings would get into some of those details a little more in-depth as we know more.
I think that, and you've been good about raising things like this. We need to, because people need to come in with their eyes open and know what we're getting into. I mean, it's, it doesn't come without changes to the way things are going to function.
Thank you.
Peter, can I ask a quick one? And it's, it's, Jackie kind of hit on it somewhat, so maybe it's already answered. But I didn't get to see Commissioner Riley's, I read, I read some of the headlines, honestly. So I'm asking you to maybe give some projection and conjecture, so don't go there if you don't feel comfortable. But it was basically as part of the announcement, do you, have you heard, or do you think there would be any reduction in the distance of three feet as part of that as well?
I am guessing, listening to the same news sources that everyone else listens to, and I am not a medical person, or I'm guessing just as a person who's lived with this damn pandemic, the way you all have, that, that three feet won't change. I, I'm guessing just as a person who's lived with this damn pandemic, the way you all have, that, that three feet won't change. But that's that's just my own personal opinion. That'll be the minimum. And then six feet when a mask is off will continue uh to be the minimum and, and so. But that may, that may change when the shot gets out there uh with everybody, hopefully.
Anyone else? All right. Well, Peter, thank you for that information, the updates. We really appreciate it. Um, and we'll have more coming up after um we meet with the Abington Education Association for everyone in a couple of weeks. Right? We'll have some sort of update. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we're moving on to the COVID testing and vaccine update uh with Mrs. Uh Dr. Michelle. Excuse me.
Thank you. I also, um before I talk about uh COVID testing and vaccines, I did want to spend just a minute on the new transportation guidelines that Peter alluded to. Last week, Desi came out with, I, with new guidelines that um now allow um buses at the elementary level uh to be full, which we typically have two to a seat, um at times three to a seat. And at the middle and high school level, if your uh community is still at a higher risk, then it's two students to a seat, which is what we do schedule for um middle and high school buses. So are typically scheduled. So um those guidelines uh do provide a lot of uh relief around transportation for us. Um, so with windows open, a minimum of two inches and in inclement weather, every other window open at two inches. Um plus additional students on the bus. So those are the new uh transport.
Alicia, and so like Peter, that's where my question kind of came from too. I mean, Desi just changed that where clearly three elementary students on a bus are not three feet apart. Um, so I didn't know if it's, if that was something that, and that's where the idea that I understand they're on a bus much less than they're in a classroom. So I get that, but the threshold had been fifteen minutes in so many places. So they're on a bus for more than fifteen minutes. So that's kind of where my thought process came from, I'm asking that.
And that's a, that's a good question. So co- uh question, any other questions on transportation? Okay, cool. Um, I'm just gonna spend a minute talking about um COVID nineteen testing in our schools and uh vaccine distribution update. So um since our last meeting, uh Sarah LaPointe, Donna Conso and Alicia Reed, who is our athletic trainer, have all been trained and uh to administer the BioNex Now antigen tests. We have started uh the testing um for students who are students and staff who are asymptomatic or have been a close contact. Uh to date, we've tested, don't forget, we had a vacation week in there, but to date, we've tested over twenty five individuals and that um is anticipated to be ramped up in the, in the coming weeks. So anyone, any student or staff member who is uh symptomatic for COVID nineteen can be tested. And um anyone who is a close contact to someone within school uh that had COVID nineteen will also be eligible to be tested. And those will all be done um by appointment. And always with uh parental permission. We're also um looking at using the BioNex Now uh test for some limited surveillance. So do um testing a group of uh of people um that are connected to one another somehow, whether it's within a class or a cohort or a team or a gr- or some other group and do surveillance testing. Um, that's something that, that we're looking at at now also. I just want to reiterate that um this is all done with parental consent and um the testing is very simple. Uh people have been, parents have, families have been very appreciative of, of the work that Donna, Sarah and Alicia have done. Drive up, have a swab, fifteen minutes later, know your results. Thank you to them uh for, for leading the charge uh for testing. Uh, questions? Vaccine distribution. Um again, you may have read in the newspaper, heard on the news that the state has changed course in the last few weeks around vaccine distribution. And their focus has moved away from local health departments uh providing vaccine clinics to the mass vaccination sites. So um our local health agents have not been able to schedule additional um first vaccine clinics because of this change. Um, they have been able to secure second vaccines for those uh seniors and, and um, in health uh care professionals that were able to get a verse, first vaccine, but they haven't been able to schedule additional um vaccine clinics. Um Marty, Lindsay, Chief Nuttall, the Board of Health and Representative Allison Sullivan have continued their advocacy at the state level to um to encourage the state to change that and to be able to do vaccines within Abington, which would help Abington as a community um and, and community members. But um that's still uh to be determined to be continued. Abington High School has been a certified emergency dispensing site. And um prior to COVID and um we had a, have had, it had a couple of very successful clinics there and at the senior center. So we're hoping that we'll be able to continue that. But as of right now, that is not the direction uh that the state has, has taken.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks, Dr. Michelle. Uh so we're going to uh student representative updates with Sam Carvalho. If you can unmute Sam, please. Thank you. Hi, Sam. Sam, if you click on there should be a button down below that you can either dial in or use your speakers. Should be able to use your speaker.
You should be unmuted. It looks like you're unmuted now, Samuel. Yeah, but we can't hear you. Sorry.
So if you, if you click the arrow next to the mute button, you'll get a prompt that pops up. And you might need to change your microphone setting from whatever it's set to, to something else.
And the same thing happened to me last meeting, so don't sweat it.
Right. Uh, did you have to leave and come back, Peter?
I don't know what did it. Just, I just followed Rich's. I think it was the arrow changing the speakers that made the difference.
Sometimes if you call in from your phone too, Samuel, I don't know if you could join this Zoom through your iPhone. If you have that phone, it works different sometimes.
I don't think he has the phone number though.
Yeah, he, he does. Uh because I, Samuel, about half an hour before the meeting, you know, I sent you everything. So do you want to try to do that? And then we'll keep going. And have you joined in after you give this a try?
Perfect. So um Dr. Robbins has a presentation for us for uh the educational stability review. If, oh, okay, James.
Yep. So we, yep, thank you, Wendy. We, we're in the midst of a um, of the educational, educational stability review. Um, and what that is, is it's an audit by Desi to make sure that we are up to date with uh best practices as it pertains to serving students who are homeless in foster care or are in um, or are military children. So over the past three years, up to and including this year, you know, the COVID year, Desi has been engaging in trainings to um, to make um the arrangements in schools more open and accommodating to students who are, you know, in homeless or, or, or foster care or, or military children, just the children who have to, who are vulnerable to kind of bouncing between school, school districts. And um what we don't want is to have any policies or procedures who, who make their lives any more difficult. So originally, um the, this audit was scheduled for last school year, around last March. Um, and then of course, um the onset of COVID precautions took place. So this, um, so this um audit was moved from last, uh from last March until, um, you know, this, this winter. And so what they, so this is kind of considered a working audit. Where what they don't, what the assumption that they don't have is that every district has every policy and procedure in place that's consistent with best practice. The reason they're having the audit is that they know that they've introduced a lot of new policies and procedures. And therefore they're going to have it so that they can tell you what you need to change and you can do it within the audit timeframe. So what's important for people to know is that there have been some um very recent adjustments made as to best practices as to how to support students who are homeless and in foster care. And so I'm going to explain those um very quickly. Then I'm going to explain where we're at on the audit. And then that'll uh wrap us up. So as, as far as, um, as, as far as how Desi would like us managing uh students who are homeless, they'd like to make sure that children, uh that children who are homeless have mandatory access to their school of origin. In other words, if a student was living in Abington and Abington was the place where homelessness occurred and they ended up having to um to double up with the family in Whitman, they now should have mandatory access to Abington. Previously, it was just to the extent feasible. You know, if, if uh, if transportation could be arranged for them, if there was still spacing in our school, you know, logistic, logistics prevailed. Um, now uh Desi, Desi would like it that so, so that uh homeless children have ready access to their, to their school of origin. Another uh right that um that Desi would now like to assert for homeless students is that um their homeless status um be protected under certain privacy rights. In other words, that we, we do not readily share or, or share in any way a student's homeless status with um, with anyone not affiliated with the family. Before, there were no specific protections regarding that. And now it's just you know, specific that we need to protect the homelessness status of our students. And the last up for, for the rights of homeless students is that now homeless families have a dispute resolution um pathway that they can take with school districts through Desi. So it used to be the case that if, if a homeless family had a dispute with a, a principal of a building, if they, if their child could still attend their school because they became homeless and now are living in Holbrook, for example, but they still want to come to Abington, it would be, be between the, that principal and the family. And it goes without saying that there is a um, a power imbalance in, in, in that conversation, which resides with the principal. So in order to protect the rights of homeless children, Desi would like it so, or now mandates that um, that uh school districts and families participate in a dispute resolution process overseen by Desi if, you know, if there's a disagreement as to where a student should be. So those are the new rights of homeless students. I'm now going to share the new rights of students in foster care. And then I'm just going to say what this all means for Abington. Um, so also for uh individuals should know about these new um protections and rights for students who are in foster care. So they also should have mandated access to their school of origin. Um, previously, there actually wasn't a spe- there wasn't spelled out regulations with respect to this. Essentially, school districts would operate inconsistent with they would treat homeless students essentially as, uh, a foster care students essentially as homeless students, but there weren't any written rights or protections. But now is the case that Desi mandates a policy with respect to foster care students. And that that policy should make it foster students have access to their school. Additionally, um, when a student is placed in foster care, um, there is a decision that needs to be made whether or not the student is placed in their school of origin where they were residing previously or where they're now housed because of foster. To make it concrete, they were living in Abington, but now they're in a foster care home in Whitman. Where do they go? Who decides? So Desi has figured that out for us. What um, the way they would like that managed is they would like the um uh deep uh school districts to collaborate with DCF caseworkers and engage in what's called a best interest determination. That meeting is shared, i- is chaired by DCF, meaning that they ultimately get the final decision made. So what this means is in the hypothetical scenario I just mentioned, a kid was living in Abington, was placed in a foster care placement in Whitman. Essentially, um, the kid still has access to school in Abington. And the DCF caseworker has to establish a, a best interest determination meeting, usually within ten school days. At that meeting, this uh, Abington is invited, Whitman is invited, the child is invited, and anyone else with unique knowledge about the child is invited. And what is determined is where should that student go to school? Even if Abington has concerns about uh, about the decision that's made, ultimately the decision rests with DCF. If, if Abington has concerns about the student coming back to Abington, but DCF says the student comes back to Abington, the student comes back to Abington. With that said, similarly to the uh, to the, to the rights of homeless care, uh of homeless students, um, there is a uh Desi resolution process that schools can engage, can engage in. Um, if they find that the decision at a best interest determination meeting is um questionable. So if, if we disagree with the finding of a DCF caseworker, we can bring it to Desi who can kind of adjudicate for us. But in most cases, they'll, they'll continue to respect the foster care students' right to the school of origin, which means when students enter foster care when they're living in Abington, they'll most likely always have the right to um, to come to Abington. The last thing I'll, I'll mention is just for uh, for children in um, in military families. Um, Desi is now recommending, and this is actually a recommendation, whereas the foster care and homeless rights are considered a bit more mandatory. But for um military families, they would like school districts to accept temporary school records and, and allow enrollment, whereas typically we require um, uh, school records before we initiate enrollment. Just so we don't delay um enrollment for these children, it's recommended that we just accept whatever temporary records, get them started and then pursue permanent records. Additionally, um, we should, um, they recommend that school districts allow the acceptance of excused absences because military families are just um, due to their uh personal commitments are more likely to uh, uh have excuse absences. And lastly, a um, it's advised that we honor course placements and test scores from previous school districts as opposed to kind of making our own uh recommendations. So that's what Desi's been, that's been kind of the um, the protective um arrangements that Desi's been putting together over the past three school years, including this. And the way of, of having all school districts buy into this is through this audit process. So we are now in the midst of it. And um thus far, we, we've been found, our practices actually are consistent with Desi recommendations because they've been training us all along. So, so even though our policies um, uh don't yet articulate this in, in terms, in terms of practice, um, we, we've been adhering to um local advice that we, you know, that we get from Desi. Um, um, but uh, so now the, the final step in order to get, to conclude uh the audit and make it so that we've got a, a passing glowing review and are able to move on is just that our um our policy review and update subcommittee um has to review our current policies related to homeless students. Um, because in two thousand, uh, uh, because uh MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee has um produced model um policies with respect to uh homeless students, foster care students and military children. And um Desi would like uh school districts to adopt those. So um, so now it's under consideration by the policy review update and subcommittee if our district will adopt that. Um, so that is a bit, a bit of an update as to what um Desi has created. Um, what, what we've done and what's next for us in the audit process. And I can answer any questions if, if there are any.
James, I was actually, that was really interesting. Thank you for all that. Um, it made me think about the, the just being in the pandemic and all the changes we've had. Is there a liaison? Like who handles that? The le- like the relationship or the checking in on that population of students during these times? Like maybe, I guess, I just don't know the answer to that. I was curious how we, we, how we keep our pulse on how they're doing now.
Right. So overall, so as a district, the whole, our homeless liaison is me, which means it's my responsibility to just essentially make sure that we are receiving updated information about how to manage these students. And then just kind of filter it down to the buildings. Um, and, and so hence is why I'm the, the point person for this process. Um, but as far as to how the relate, uh, but um But as far as to how the relate, but it's, it's probably hard for you to imagine me managing all the relationships, you know, for, for homeless students throughout the building. So the way that works is, is on a building by building basis. But usually what will happen is the principals will rely on support staff, and that depends on the building, you know, for example, at Beaver Brook and Woodstale, it may be the school psychologist. Whereas at the middle school and high school, it may more likely be the guidance counselors who will connect with individual families. So it, what I can say is certainly the case is that when a student is in a vulnerable status like this, be it in foster care or homeless, their status is known among, among support staff, and so they're considered sort of a, a high priority student.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
James, I just got a quick one. Could, so it was more about, it wasn't so much the military part, it was, I think it was foster care where it was, if they were an Abington student, got put in a Whitman home, they'd still have access to Abington schools if they, if that was the best interest. Is it, could it, could it like go back and forth? Could you be in, could they say Abington then change to Whitman based on circumstances of that makes more sense now because he's living there and he's become part of that community? And like, can those changes occur as well?
Oh, yeah, and Chris, just, just to play it out, just, just make sure I follow the question. So it would be like, our Abington student would go to Whitman, but then are you imagining perhaps that different circumstances change and then he continues to have access to Abington? Is that, is that the scenario you're thinking about?
Yeah, I think so. I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's a good question. So actually, so that would not happen. And, and here's why, is because through the best interest determination meeting, what, what the DCF caseworker is deciding as to what becomes the new school of origin.
Okay.
So through that process, if Whitman has decided to be the place, then Whitman is now the school of origin. So even though that student has homeless status, it, it doesn't necessarily lead to automatic.
No, that clarified it. Thank you.
James, I just have a quick question as to use, I know that sometimes I've heard that, like, things fall through the cracks with DCF. So I'm wondering, I think it was with the foster as well. So say DCF and say, say you have to go in front of DESI, right? How long, how, like what's the expected timeline? You know, I mean, do they get two weeks? Do they get three days?
Usually it's 90 days.
90 days, wow.
To go through the, to go through the whole process. Usually it can be much more expedited. But just usually that's the amount of time that DESI asks for. Because ju- just to put that in context, the educational stability department at DESI consists of about four, four individuals, but that represents the whole state. So, so what that, what that means is just that it could be, you know, in the unfortunate situation that that happens to Abington, which it may, right? That could occur while there are three situations happening in, say Fall River to pick one at, at random. And, and two more, you know, in Plymouth, like all vying for four individuals from DESI's time. So, so that's why, so that's why that timeframe is allotted, just so that they, so it can be reasonably done. But, but I know that they're, they hope to do it in a more expedited fashion because that, that could be a long time, right? Because that's a, yeah, half a school year.
Definitely a long time. Thank you for that. So offline, we will set something up for the policy subcommittee meeting. I know I'm on it and I believe Chris, so we'll speak with Peter and set something up so we can review that as soon as possible.
Awesome. Thanks. Yeah, thank you both for, and Peter for, for considering that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So I believe Sam is back up and running. The text he sent me, let's try it out. Nope. One more time? All right, maybe offline you can speak to somebody and we'll move on, just to the next one and then come back.
He's been working with Rich Bykowski.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so.
Awesome. We'll catch up.
You'll be back?
Yes, we'll come back. All right, then we are on to Dr. Fedorovitz has, is going to speak about the Seal of Bili literacy. And Sheri, I think you're unmuted.
There we go. Thanks, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. We're pleased to announce that this spring, we're going to offer the opportunity for students to attain the state, state seal of bili literacy. And basically, it's an award provided by the state of Massachusetts that recognizes high school graduates that attain high academic levels of proficiency in both English, in addition to a second world language. So graduating students can receive the seal and it will appear on their transcript or diploma as a statement of accomplishment for college admissions and future, future employers. The purpose of the state seal of bili literacy is to recognize language diversity, encourage students, students to master languages, and prepare students for a global society. There are three criteria that need to be met in order to obtain the seal. And the first one is to satisfy the language arts, English language arts, or the ELA criteria, which is passing the ELA MCAS in high school. The second is to attain a score of an intermediate high on an assessment we're going to use, which is called the stamp. And that stands for the standards-based measurement of proficiency. And they'll be tested in four domains, which include reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And then, of course, the last one is that they have to meet all the graduation requirements. So this year, any senior graduating that meets all the, all of these requirements is eligible to receive the state seal of bili literacy. And that takes the form of a seal on their diploma. So most of our students are either going to take Spanish or Portuguese in the form of the stamp test, but other language options are available if students speak other languages, they're fluent in other languages. What we're going to do is we plan to provide the stamp assessment for this spring for juniors and seniors coming this April that want to volunteer to take it at no cost to the student. Next spring, we're going to look at expanding to the middle school as a benchmark to help direct teaching and learning. However, the students at that time won't earn that seal. You actually need to earn that seal once you graduate and you pass all the requirements. So in the packet, you probably saw there's a draft of a letter that will be going home in the next week or two to our families to notify them that we are going to offer this opportunity for students to obtain the seal of bili literacy. And we're really excited about this opportunity. We're really looking forward to it because I think it'll be a great opportunity for our students. So any questions? Danielle, of course, hi.
Rich, she just needs to be unmuted.
You know that I am so thrilled about this. So I'm really, really glad that we're bringing this to Abington. I think it's so important for all of our students to be able to have that chance. Just wondering, I know we had mentioned something about potentially doing tassels for cap and gown if we have normal graduation. So I was just hoping that we could recognize them in a bunch of different ways. And then also just wondering, unless things have changed, schools will oftentimes let students start early and take it if their proficiency is in a pretty good place. Because they can take it, if they don't, if they don't earn the seal, for example, sophomore year, then they can take it junior and senior year so that they can get a chance. So I know this year is more of a pilot year to see how things go, hopefully get some seals for our students. But in the future, will we be able to allow students to take it in their earlier high school years so that they'll have multiple chances to get that seal?
I think that that's certainly something in the works, and I think it would be beneficial because the way I understand it is they can still work toward that attainment, no matter what grade level they are in high school.
Yeah, great. So, thank you.
Awesome ideas, Danielle, and I love this too, Dr. Fedorovitz, this is great. For our students, and I just want to, I know that I talked to Peter about it, but I just want to reiterate, or if you can, that this isn't just for, you know, our students that take Spanish, but any of our Asian or Portuguese students automatically get to take this test. Okay.
Absolutely. So, for example, for our students that come from Brazil, if they're fluent in Portuguese, they can certainly take this, you know, pass the ELA MCAS, meet the graduation requirements, and they definitely would get that state seal of bili literacy. So it's open to everybody and all opportunities, and it doesn't matter which language they speak. So it's, it's a great opportunity.
I have, I have a question.
Finally, it's about time. So I, I come from Brazil, obviously. I speak Portuguese, and I was wondering, could I take the seal twice? So for example, this year I would take it in Portuguese, like the Portuguese version, and then next year I would take it in Spanish?
I don't see why not. I mean, you, it's not limited to one language, you know, one world language. It's, you have the ELA MCAS under your belt. And if you want to take it in Portuguese and in Spanish, I would highly encourage that.
Could I take them in the same year as well?
Yeah, yes. You could, you can take them, unless things have changed from last year. There's no limit to the number of tests that you can take in a given year.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was wondering.
I'm just curious, is this something new, like why, like, that we just became eligible to do? Or is it, like, why now? Like?
Not all systems do it. Some do, some don't. It's something that was talked about. Danielle brought it up, I think, a year ago. And we looked into it and said, let's, let's do it.
No, it's great. I think it's great.
So, thank you, Danielle Grafton.
Definitely. Thank you. Okay, so I believe that's all we have from Dr. Fedorovitz at this time. So I think we're going to try out Sam again.
Sorry, guys.
No, that's fine.
Can you guys still see me?
No. Anymore, but that's okay.
I hear you. Sorry, we just got to work with it because. All right, so here's some student updates. So the induction ceremony for National Honor Society was carried out virtually as planned. We obviously wish it was in person, just like everybody else, but we're very happy that it happened in the first place. It was carried out successfully. My mom was very emotional when she saw it, but yeah. The students have officially started their new semester classes and election courses for next year. Has been discussed recently by the students as well. Given it's, for me, I'm a junior, so next year, senior year, it's making students very nervous. Everyone is also excited about the fall two sports, and it seems to be running smoothly. I have a few friends that are on the football team. They're very content with everything. And lastly, students are still nervous about the MCAS and the SATs, but we will continue to persevere just as our teachers have been. And that's all the updates that I have.
Thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
And I did say on, on poor Sam's behalf that he's been using Microsoft Teams for all of his classes, and this is probably the first time he had to use Zoom, which is, it is not a reflection of his technical skills, it's just a reflection of using this new application for the first time.
Thank you.
I just got proficient in it a couple of weeks ago. I had trouble all summer with our talks with the ADA, so Peter was always bailing me out before them, so happens to everybody. Just want to say that the National Honor Society ceremony, that was great. I watched it as well. It's one of my favorites. It's a shame that we did miss it this year in person, but very proud of everybody. So, and then just one other thing with the semester two classes that was sent out this week. I don't know if there's anything that needs to be said more on it, Peter or Jonathan or?
I think we need Jonathan unmuted, please.
Awesome.
Yeah, just really briefly, what came out to high school parents today was for students starting next week and select their electives for the 2021, 2022 school year. So just to kind of tease out that difference, so that's what was informed to parents today in a letter and what we started in late January were our semester two courses for the current year, so kids' schedules shifted. But that was the letter today was about students selecting courses for the next year. So please review the program of studies, which is on our website, or check with their school counselor if they have any questions.
Great, James, thank you. So next we have an update on grades five and six computer distribution by Rich Bykowski.
Hey, everybody. I had to turn my camera on, which is not my favorite, but just, just an update. The good news is that this week, we were able to get, well, really, last week, we were able to get all the computers set up and ready to go for grades five and six. Obviously, in a perfect world, we would have had everything ready back in September. That's not exactly how it worked out, and I'll go over that a little bit in a minute. But as of Monday, when rollouts started happening with the middle school five and six green students, we're getting to the point now where we have a one-to-one rollout for our students five through 12, which as of today is 1,263 kids. So just as a little, you know, story, a trip down my memory lane for how all this shook out. So everyone knows we went remote back in March. It was a surprise. When April rolled around and I went back through my emails, it was the end of April, we were talking with vendors about buying laptops so that we'd have devices for grades five and six. The problem was that everybody, you know, every school district, every family in, you know, most of the world was looking for devices. And so the supplies just simply weren't available. So even though we had CARES Act money available, and we put an order in at the end of April, we just waited and waited. We waited all towards the end of last school year. We waited all summer. I was in constant connection with the vendors, where's the devices, where are the devices? And they just kept pushing us off and pushing us off. So then September rolled around, and in September, the federal government actually banned the import of some materials from China, which unfortunately hit us. And the devices that we were buying were coming from China, and so they didn't come into the United States, and so that order again got delayed. We tried to pivot a little bit, try and find different devices. We did get another order, you know, the same amount of money, same vendor, but it didn't really change things. We kept getting pushed off. We kept getting pushed off. And then we got to December, and Felicia's talked about it a little bit. The, at one point, the CARES Act money deadline was December 30th of 2000. And we were told if we didn't have devices in our hands by that date, then the money was just going away and we'd get nothing. So once again, at the beginning of December, we, you know, kind of pushed the panic button and pivoted again, went out to vendors again. And luckily, we were able to find someone who had devices, who could get them, could package them and could get them to us before the deadline. Of course, now we all know that deadline goes back. But it kind of worked out in our favor in the sense that if, if we had known the deadline was in March, maybe we wouldn't have canceled one order and all of them. I think at this point, most school districts have received devices that they've ordered, you know, almost a year ago now. But I know there are some larger districts that are still waiting. So it's, it's crazy, like it's, it's almost been a year and there are kids out there still have received devices that schools have been trying to get all that time. So we received the devices right around Christmas vacation. And it was vacation, but then we were able to collect them, we were able to unbox them, we had to inventory them, configure them, assign them to the kids. Another, you know, wrinkle in the whole thing was these devices are bigger than the ones that we had previously by a little bit. So the bags that we had before didn't fit them, so now we needed to get bags. So, you know, it just was like a comedy of errors almost, like every time you think you're getting to a certain point, something else pops up. But we were lucky in that during Christmas break, we had a couple of former Abington students who work in our office. Kyle Nealan and Diane Chow, they were in, and they were able to help really get things rolling and get things set up and configured for us. So without their help, we probably wouldn't have been able to roll them out yesterday. So special thanks to them. And so that's kind of the story of everything. Again, by the end of this week, the hybrid kids would have picked all their devices up. The middle school office has been hard at work contacting the, the virtual kids to have them come in and get their devices. And I think most of those families have done that at this point. So again, this will give us 1,263 kids in the district who now have a device that was assigned to them for their time in the Abington public schools. And just as a side note, at this point as of today, we also have provided 470, excuse me, 470. And just as a side note, um, at this point, as of today, um, we also have provided 470, excuse me, 407 families with a loner device to use for this school year. So some of those will be coming back now because some of those kids are part of that five and six population. And that might allow us to provide, uh, devices to other folks. Um, but that's kind of the, the state of, uh, laptop devices and attitude.
Thank you, Rich. So, um, there's no bags for the new, uh, devices?
No, we got bags. We just had to rush to order. So they're actually the same, almost the exact same bag. They're just a little bit.
Okay, perfect.
So, um, behind the scenes, I should also say that Rich and the other members of the technology office, um, along with supporting everybody using all of these new tools through all of the pivots that we make, um, have been, um, taking different things apart in the buildings and standalones and laptops, laptop carts to provide those computers to people, uh, in their homes, um, while managing the rest of the operation. Um, the computers that Rich is getting back will now be used at the earlier elementary levels um, where available in our classrooms. So this is not only a benefit to five and six, but then also, um, younger students in the earlier grades. So I just want to, um, thank Rich and then thank the people that have been supporting Rich because I know that this is, um, you know, even, even members of, uh, the administrative team. It's, it's been a Saturday here or there. It's been, um, nights. It's been, um, his team, um, has worked hard to, to do everything that they can for kids and, um, educators.
Definitely agree, Rich. You guys have been really awesome this year. Uh, I know that there's been many a calls to you last minute. And, uh, everybody's just expedited everything perfectly, I think, as much, as well as you can at least. Um, does anyone have any questions?
I just had one and I think you might have hit on it. Um, Rich, first of all, thank you, um, truly for everything. And I think you hit on this at the very end, but just so anybody listening gets it too. So our seven through 12 one-to-one program is now a five through 12 one-to-one program. This is not just a COVID year only thing, right? For five and six?
That is correct. Those devices are, they, they belong to the school, but they're, you know, they are assigned to those students going forward. So they will keep them and use them through their school years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Actually, my question is follows yours, Chris, pretty, um, first off, I'm going to continue to make Rich uncomfortable with saying, what an amazing job he does. Um, and I've worked in a few different districts and every district I've been in has like rich times a lot of people and we just don't have that and Rich somehow makes it all work. Like we do have that amount of people and it's not just Rich. I recognize Vicky and all the other people that you have supporting you. But you're definitely at the helm and we thank you a million times over. Um, my question is actually, I don't know if Samuel could answer it or Mr. McCurtin, but here it's, I'm the gnat that has like the annoying questions. And so here, I'm just going to go with it. Here it is. These laptops for five through 12. Awesome. We have them. Everybody has them. This is, and I'm laughing at my own question, but like, there seems to be, I remember this from when my daughter was in fifth grade. It doesn't lighten the backpack. Like it's not like we get a laptop and then therefore the students carry less textbooks. And I actually saw something the other day that, uh, it seemed like a fifth grade parent maybe was commenting on how heavy the backpack was when they got off the bus. And, um, and I noticed like in seventh grade, it's still heavy. So like, is it, is it a parent thing? Like we just need to get over that you guys can carry the backpack? Samuel, maybe, or like, is there going to be an eventual reduction in what kids have to carry? Because we have the device, like I'm thinking of the working world and how we tend to carry less because everything lives in our, our device.
Um, it definitely, my mom is the same way. Cause I used, I used to have to walk home from school. I would come home and she's like, how are you? Does your spine not hurt? I'm like, no, I'm all good, mom. Like you forgot I used to live in Brazil, but okay. But no, a lot of, uh, books that we had to carry before, it, it's kind of weird to think about the fact that it used to be heavier. But like my Spanish textbook, for example, that's the first one that comes to mind, my math textbook. It's, um, all online, which helps a lot. And even before, when I entered high school, we would just put most of our textbooks in our backpacks and that's all that I really remember. But yeah, I think that's more of a parent thing, if anything.
You can keep them at home.
Thoughts? Yeah.
So one of the good things when we purchase new programs is a lot of the new programs do come with digital copies of the textbooks. And then the physical copies of the textbooks aren't needed because you can access them online. Unfortunately, not all of our programs are new programs, so we don't have that ability for all of those. I think with five and six getting the new laptops, there should be an opportunity to reduce the need for things to go back and forth, but not within all of our individual subject areas. Does that make sense? And I guess we move forward. We can, and I think I've had this conversation, um, with quite a few parents and quite a few families. A lot of times kids are actually taking things home because they, 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 if they fear they might need them, even though they don't necessarily need them. And then this year with the COVID regulations and not being able to use lockers has really added to that, unfortunately for our kids. So hopefully as these vaccines roll out and we're, and we're able to move back towards normalcy, some of that will reduce naturally too.
Yeah. And I know like in a pile of, of, of a million problems, this is like, you can laugh at me later about this, but, um, I, I'm, we have a 10 AM meeting tomorrow, I think, James, Robin, am I right on that? On SCL talk and just social emotional subcommittee meeting around like, and I think our focus is going to be just maybe a little more geared towards the middle school and what type of social emotional, um, supports are just like, where are we at? And it always just makes me think about that, like the hidden curriculum piece of what, like some kids just don't know. And, and something as specific is like, you don't necessarily have to take home every book. Um, and I don't know that where they would pick that up. Like I know that seems obvious to some of us, but maybe we can kind of, it's a small, it's a small thing, but it just made me curious with the addition of the five through six, having their own laptops. If that backpack problem might, um, work itself out.
No, it's a, it's a great question. When you see students walking out of the building that are just a little bit bigger than the backpack they're trying to carry, it, it certainly is pointed.
Yeah, I think I have one of those at home. Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Rich, seriously, thank you to you and your team. We all greatly appreciate you guys.
Glad to have, thank you.
Um, so next, um, we have our new business and establishing of our next school committee meeting will be on March 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Not sure at this time if it's going to be in person or on Zoom, depending on, um, what happens, but we'll let everybody know. Um, our dates to remember are Wednesday, March 3rd, which will be a half-day professional development for staff. Wednesday, March 3rd, uh, is Green Wave Boosters meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, March 23rd is our regular scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, March 24th is a half-day professional development day for staff. Uh, we will be going into executive session after this.
You don't mind. I, I know the Green Wave Boosters have a trivia fundraiser night.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Saturday. I don't know it's a time though, but I know there's stuff out there.
Yep. I think, I believe it's at 7:00 PM and I think you have to, uh, register online. And you can have, uh, between two and six participants or two and four. Um, but yes, that is online, uh, everywhere. And, uh, you can contact Mary, Mary Rogers for additional information. Uh, she's on the boosters or Melissa Merrick. Um, thank you for that, Chris. So we will be going to executive session after this meeting, uh, for discussion with our principals. Um, and so at this time I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Thanks, everyone. Have an awesome night.
So I'll, uh, thank you, everybody. I'll see everybody. Meeting link?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not everybody, but most of them. Thank you, Samuel.
Bye, Sam. Bye.